Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is September 7th, sixteenth. Excuse me. Please rise for the pledge.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the Board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the Board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the Board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. Mrs. Bickert, could I please have a roll call?
Yes. Present, we have our Mrs. Deardorff, Mrs. Goldsmith, Mr. Lackey, Dr. Sharma, Mrs. Weingarten, Mrs. Westwood, Mr. Jackson, and Mrs. Hermans. Dr. Wright is absent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rizoni, announcements for tonight?
None at this time. Thank you.
Great. So we'll move on to public to be heard. This is on agenda items only. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, please approach the podium with your name, township of residence, as well as the agenda item for which you're referring to. Okay, seeing as no one is approaching the podium, we'll move on to our first and only presentation for the night, which is an update on Title IX from our partners at Fox Rothschild.
We were having PowerPoint issues, but we are on the verge of getting the PowerPoint up.
Okay, no worries.
Mr. Fitzgerald, the game starts in ninety-two minutes.
Duly noted, my friend. Duly noted. I can, we can begin the introductions. And just for, for kind of background for the community, our office was out at the Policy Committee meeting last week to discuss kind of global changes to Title IX, some of the issues that impact the district in light of a lawsuit that we've discussed that out in the state of Kansas. What we wanted to do this evening was kind of twofold. Explain kind of what is Title IX, because I think sometimes there is that concern about, you know, how encompassing is it, what the changes that are coming down the pike, and what are the options for the district in light of some of the litigation that's out there. My colleague Alexis Spurlock has been working with one of my partners, Bonnie Young, essentially training the Commonwealth. They've held trainings throughout the month of July and August on these revisions. She has been embedded in these changes for about three or four months since they were published back in the spring, and she is as good as anyone to explain this to you this evening.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alexis Spurlock. And so what I want to do before we get into what the actual changes are is talk a little bit about what Title IX is and really how it works in the educational space. So this is the actual statute of Title IX. It's this little green box, and it is no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation. And so this is the actual statute, and what we're talking about when we're talking about the regulations that implement Title IX are much larger than that. So this is what the actual code is, and then there are regulations, which the new regulations came in a document about thirteen hundred pages long with the preamble and the regulations. So we're talking about this one sentence, which turns into many, many pages of regulations. So the history of Title IX is that, you know, historically people have really thought Title IX to be addressing gender equity in sports, but it's always had this mandate to address sex discrimination in hiring and missions, other aspects of a school's education program. And in the 2024 regulations, we will get into this, but the reach is broader and more expansive. And the department, one of the things they explained when they put forth these new 2024 regulations was that they are clarifying and expanding protections. So here are the big changes. The one, the first is the definition of sex discrimination. So sex discrimination has now been expanded much further scope to include categories that I will elaborate on in a few minutes, such as gender identity, sexual orientation, categories that were not explicitly covered in the regulations in 2020. There is also an expansion on the definition of hostile environment harassment. Hostile environment harassment is the method under sexual harassment. And hostile environment is essentially that hostile educational environment that may be perpetuated from sexual harassment, and that's really the key behind many of these Title IX cases and Title IX complaints. There are changes to the process in how Title IX complaints are handled. Back in 2020, it was very structured. It was very, you know, you get a complaint, you have this many days to do this, then the next step, it's, it was a very delineated structure. Now, this new grievance process, and really it seems like it's in exchange for expanding the regulations so much, is that schools have a lot more discretion on how to implement these procedures, and I'll talk about some of the choices that the district has to make. So this is a brief overview. Single investigator model is permitted. I'll talk about that in a little bit. Advisors for parties are no longer required in the grievance procedures, and that's a decision point for the district as well. There's guidance for Title IX coordinators on factors to consider in determining whether to initiate investigations, and that means on their own, when you have a complainant who possibly doesn't want to come forward, or you find out about conduct without receiving an actual complaint. Then required outreach to the IEP team members when you have an eligible student. That's something that many teams were previously doing in the past anyway, but that's part of the new regulations. And then a big change which will impact your policy is the appeal standard. And that change is that the appeal process must be the same at a minimum as appeal process in your other discrimination complaints. So for Springford, that's other complaints such as disability, race, everything else that's under 103. This is an outline of what the different decisions that the district has to make in these new 2024 changes. So the first is the application of Title IX policy throughout the district, and we'll talk about the legal updates at the end. The investigation model, this is the, I would say, the next biggest piece of what the district has to determine, and that's whether to go single investigator model, to go hybrid model, or to go separate model, and I'll talk about the differences for those. The next is the appeal standard, which is, you know, what the standard will be for people to appeal Title IX complaints, which will then trickle into your other 103 complaints, whether you want to permit advisors in the process. Admitting advisors or permitting advisors, in the past, in 2020, it was required that the district had to allow advisors in the grievance procedures. This is something that is no longer required. So you have to make a decision for advisors whether you want to allow them or not. You know, sometimes it's great to keep those, you know, pesky attorneys out, but then also think about, you know, the support of your students. Their parents can always be involved, so this is someone outside of their parents, whether advisors are going to be permitted in your process. And, you know, part of that is too, that you can decide, you know, we'll have advisors present for interviews, but maybe not for other parts of the investigation. The last piece is timelines. As I mentioned, in 2020, it was very structured as far as how many days you had to do certain, to complete certain pieces of the grievance process. Now those timelines are all up to the district. So those are the lists of the different pieces of the timeline to think about: evaluation, the completion of investigation, outcome determination, and the appeal. So these are the new categories that are now included under discrimination on the basis of sex and sex discrimination. These, you know, arguably were part of the 2020 regulations and did fall on discrimination on the basis of sex, depending on where you were located. But now, these are explicitly included in the regulations. So these new categories: sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy-related conditions, sexual orientation, and gender identity. And if you think about under 2020, likely, these were all, well, these were all protected under your regular 103 policy. So these were still being investigated. The school is still under state law and obligations to protect students under these categories, but now they're, they come under the Title IX umbrella. And so there are two pieces. There are those categories, and then there's sex-based harassment, which in 2020 was called sexual harassment. It's essentially the same thing. So it's sex harassment and other harassment on the basis of sex, including quid pro quo harassment. These are the three categories: hostile environment, and then sexual offenses. And hostile environment is really the piece that was expanded in 2024. Quid pro quo harassment is the same as it was in 2020, and sexual offenses are similar to what they were in 2020, and those are those enumerated criminal offenses that you may be familiar with. So this is that definition that has really expanded the scope of Title IX in 2024. So you have those new five additional categories, and then when you have a complaint come forth for some type of sex discrimination, the Title IX coordinator has to look at that conduct and determine whether it is likely to meet these five factors. So you're looking at whether it was sexual conduct that was unwelcome, whether it's sex-based, whether it is subjectively and objectively offensive. In the past, it was objectively offensive. So now you're looking at subjectively, you know, it's the person who reports it, the complainant, and then also objectively is the reasonable person. I've talked to a lot of middle schoolers as I've handled Title IX complaints, and it's, sometimes you can't always find an objective middle schooler, but that's what you're looking at. You're looking at the student's age, you're looking at their abilities, their intellectual levels. You're looking at all those factors and whether it's objectively offensive. And then this is really where that expansion is. It's that the fourth prong is severe or pervasive. So in 2020, it was severe and pervasive. So the, in order to fall under Title IX, sexual harassment was a lot more difficult, because you would have circumstances that may have been sex discrimination, but they were, you know, only maybe severe, they were only pervasive. There are different types of conduct that can fall under these. And just to give an example of what that is, is that you could now have, for severe, you can now have one instance that is so severe that it meets all of these other prongs that may not have met it in the past. So if it's unwelcome, sex-based, subjectively and objectively offensive, and it's one instance, but it's so severe, this may now fall under Title IX. The other side of that is pervasive. So, but under pervasive, you may now have conduct that is occurring very frequently, but is not as severe. And say an example of that is, you know, is possibly that you have a, you know, female students are making comments about female students' butts. You know, on its face, that's not the most offensive thing when it comes to sex discrimination or sexual harassment. But if it's happening to the female students every single day, it's happening on a very regular basis, then now that conduct is falling under Title IX, when in the past, that was likely a 103, regular 103 investigation. And then the last piece that has been expanded as well is that now it limits or denies. So in the past, it was that it had to deny a person's ability to participate in school and, you know, their activity, whatever is associated with the school. Now it's limits or denies. So that gets really cloudy, because of course they did not define what limits actually means. But this is really cloud in the waters as far as that factor, because you could have a student who is saying, you know, there's a difference between a student saying, you know, because of this sex discrimination, because of this conduct that's happening to me, I can't participate in track. I'm not comfortable, I'm not going. But now, when you're looking at limits, you could be looking at a student who says, oh, I'm just uncomfortable going. Is that limiting their ability to participate? I don't know. So, you know, there are different, it's, the way to meet these different factors is really a broader scope of 2024, and that's, that's, I would say, the largest difference between 2020 and 2024.
Can I ask a question? And you might be getting to this, since you're now starting to allude to differences between 2020 and 2024. And I'm just thinking about this as a, as a parent of a ninth grader, right, who does go between buildings. If an incident were to occur, how, how would that be handled? So for example, if my daughter's in the ninth grade center, but then she's over in the high school, which would be under a different potential set of regs, is it dictated by what grade she's in, or where, the location of, like, where the event incident occurred?
So if we're talking about an instance where this, where the district adopts some of the regulations for 2024 and is still using 2020 in the school?
Correct. In that instance, like, what would dictate?
That, that was a question actually Mrs. Lee said, had, had brought up when we were talking about this several weeks ago. And the regs don't speak to it. What my view would be is, is that, that would be a district-wide Title IX matter, not building-specific, if we have students from multiple buildings. So it would go to the 2024 regulations, in my view.
Thank you.
And then here are some of the changes just for the grievance procedures. As I noted, there are a lot of differences, because they're trying to make it a less formal process and more accessible. And so just change of terminology, used to be grievance process, now it's grievance procedures. The complaint process gives a lot more flexibility for schools during the initial evaluation. So because the prediction has been from a TICSO, which is the National Title IX entity, they have predicted that it's going to create about twenty-five percent more activity on Title IX coordinators and burden on schools in order to, to encompass all of this, all these new regulations. So one of the things the department has pushed is informal resolution is a lot, they're pushing it a lot harder. They're really enforcing, pushing informal resolution as far as when a complaint comes in, to have an informal resolution process within your district, so that a complaint can go through that process. That's up to the Title IX coordinator. There are certain conduct that are not appropriate for informal resolution, but it's just one thing to keep in mind. The dismissals now are permissive rather than mandatory. They're still under the same grounds. If a Title IX coordinator gets conduct, gets a report of conduct, and they believe it's not Title IX, before they were able to say, you know, it is mandatory for me to dismiss this because of these reasons. It's going to be investigated under 103, non-Title IX harassment. And so now those are permissive. So the Title IX coordinator can dismiss, doesn't have to, but will still probably have it occur the same way. The single investigator model, which I'll talk about in a moment, jurisdiction is also expanded. There is now a trickle-down effect. So if there is conduct that happens outside of school, say there is a party on the weekend, and there is sexual conduct that occurs, maybe there's a criminal matter, and we've dealt with this before in other jurisdictions. And so there could be something that happened outside of school, and now it's trickling down into the school environment, and the kid is now saying, you know, I don't feel safe coming to school because of this thing that happened outside of school. The responsibility on the district is not to investigate whatever the conduct is that occurred outside of school, but if it's impacting their education environment, you know, they need to be putting supportive measures in place, and it may invoke a Title IX process for whatever the conduct is that's happening in school. For example, if, you know, there's a sexual assault allegation, and the male student is being called a rapist in the hallway, that kind of thing would need to be addressed by the school. There are new requirements on confidentiality. That's always been a big piece, and we at Fox have always really emphasized confidentiality in this process, but there is a new requirement on confidentiality, and that retaliation must go through the grievance procedures, when in the past it went through regular 103. So this is the decision that districts across the country are currently making. There are different models. Currently, what happens when a complaint comes in, there's one investigator, and then a different person does the decision making. Now, the Title IX regulations are permitting it to be one person. So the investigator and decision-maker can now be the same thing. You know, this is the language, as long as there is no conflict of interest or bias. And then the appeal decision-maker, if there is appeal, still has to be a separate person. That has always been the case. And so there are pros and cons to using the single investigator model, and it's really district-specific as to what works best for your school community. There is a potential lower cost to district if you don't need to use outside personnel. One of the benefits of single investigator, as someone who has done many, I've, are active- as an investigator, I've acted as a decision-maker, and sometimes when you're in those positions and you're in a silo, you don't always see what exactly needs to be looked at for the decision. Say you're the decision-maker and you're looking at the report and thinking, oh, I really wish the investigator asked that question. Or you're trying to determine, maybe there wasn't a really good assessment of credibility, and you're trying to make those credibility determinations. So there are positives to using the single investigator model.
Alexis, have you gotten a sense from other districts whether there's a trend to go to that single investigator model or staying with the multi-position model that we've seen the last several years?
I would say we're seeing a, I think the least, the least popular one that I've seen is single investigator district-wide. But what I've seen a lot is a mix of a hybrid model, which I'll talk about in a minute, where districts are choosing to use single investigator for some cases and the separate investigator decision-maker model for others. The way that that works, and I'll just leave the cons up here so you can take a look at them while I'm chatting, we'll go to the next one. So you just have to make sure that there, people are highly trained for these cons, making sure that there's, there's a perception of a lack of objectivity, right? When one person acts in multiple roles, there's a lack of fairness, and you want to think about the appearance of bias to the school community. If that's not a big problem in the school community, that may, you know, that comes into consideration for what you want to do. And so this is the language that allows for a hybrid single investigator model. And this is just says, you know, if you choose to use some but not all, you, it just has to be clear in your policy. So if you make a decision on when you'll use single investigator versus when you'll use a multi-structure, then you just have to make it clear in your policy, you know, if this, if X, then this is what the investigation looks like. And, you know, one of the big themes behind Title IX is a parent or a student should be able to look at your policy and understand how their claim will be investigated. So these are some of these, and these come right out of the Title IX regulations. So the Department of Education put forth these samples of ways in which you could structure a hybrid single investigator model. I will say what I'm actually seeing is that in districts who are choosing the single investigator model, oftentimes they're using it for employee-based complaints. So oftentimes employees, they're kind of used to HR being the investigator and decision-maker anyway. So a lot of schools, districts are choosing to work considering that model for their employee complaints. I've seen some where they are choosing for sexual assault cases, which are certainly more serious cases, to use a separate investigator model. I've seen this multiple complainants or respondents before because, you know, if you have, say, you know, five or six respondents, or you have five or six complainants, it's going to be more difficult for a single investigator, it's a lot higher workload. One of the, I would say, one of the big ones I'm seeing currently in this area is the elementary students versus secondary students. And just one of the thoughts there is that with elementary students, if you have, you know, we're actually seeing an uptick in elementary student Title IX complaints. And one thing with elementary students, if you think about that age group, is that they're not, probably not going to be that comfortable talking to an adult that they don't know. So one of the benefits of doing single investigator model with an elementary student is that, you know, you can use building principals, someone they're comfortable with, someone who is trained to be an investigator, to use a single investigator model for those type of students. Okay, so that's the, one of the big choices that was on that list, is what the investigative model will be for the district. This is the other big change that will impact other policies, other than your Title IX policy. So regardless of what you choose, under 2024 now, schools must offer the appeal process, and this is the language that's bolded, at a minimum is the same as it offers in all comparable proceedings. So this means that if you're offering an appeal procedures during, through Title IX, it has to be the same at a minimum as what's in your 103. So what, you know, we have been recommending to do here is to take the procedures out of the post-secondary, which do limit the appeals. And then moving forward to just, you just have to make sure that you're offering the same appeal in 103 and Title IX. So whatever you choose for Title IX, you have to make sure that that's consistent with your other complaints. Title IX has new training requirements. So this is just a list of the different training requirements, and I do believe many of the administrators at Springford did go to our trainings that we conducted this summer and are trained in the 2024 regulations, and I believe also trained in the 2020 regulations this past year. So these are just the four tiers of training. There's a new all-employees training where every single employee has to be trained as to what reasonably may constitute sex discrimination under the new regulations, and then these are the other hierarchies of the training that's required. Supportive measures are largely in change. These are the measures that are put into place through the grievance process for both the respondent and the complainant. They could look at a change of class schedule, moving seats, you know, a buddy in the hallway, whatever they may be. The only difference for these now is that now a complainant or respondent can challenge it. So they can say, you know, I don't want that supportive measure, or I do want this supportive measure, and the Title IX coordinator said no, there has to be someone else who they can challenge to make that decision. All right, and the implementation date for this was August 1st, 2024, and both policies have to remain in effect because anything that happened before August 1, 2024 falls under the 2020 policy regardless of what the district decides to do for implementing 2024. All right, so here are the legal challenges, and this is a list of the variety of theories. There are many legal challenges across the country, none that directly impact the entire state of Pennsylvania, but there is the Kansas case, which we'll talk about in a moment, that's impacting some schools, including this district. But this is just a list of the different theories that these lawsuits have been filed And this, these are just two lists of all the different challenges. At this point, injunctions haven't issued in every single lawsuit that's been filed across the country, which means that they are, those states in all of these except for one, which we'll talk about in a moment, the states are not, the Department of Education is not able to implement in those states. And this is just a continued list. So this is the Kansas District Court case that impacts Pennsylvania schools, is impacting Springford. The Springford has, I believe it's four schools on the list. The two elementary schools, the seventh-grade center and the high school, which they actually put clarification out yesterday that the ninth-grade center is not subject.
Okay, so just to clarify, the three organizations that we see on the screen, Moms for Liberty, Young America's Foundation, and Female Athletes United have identified 10 through 12, seventh-grade center, and two of our elementary schools?
Yes.
Which are they? Or, I know, I-
Limerick and Evans.
Correct. Limerick and Evans, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so what, so this is a Kansas case, and without getting too technical into the law, there was a case that was filed in Kansas that was filed by these three plaintiff organizations. Moms for Liberty is one that's by parents, Young America's Foundation, and Female Athletes United is parents, or, and I believe those are actually student-focused. And they filed a lawsuit essentially alleging, you know, the same thing that many of these did, regulations are not compliant with the law, and they're, you know, it's too much power, they violate First Amendment, all the same arguments that many of these other lawsuits made. But why it's impacting Pennsylvania is that the plaintiff organizations, the judge held that any student who is mom or is a participant in these plaintiff organizations, their school is subject to the injunction. So what that actually means is that the Department of Education cannot implement, enact, or enforce the new regulations in any of these schools. And when we were just talking about, Erica brought up the list, they have put forth lists on July 15th, July 26th, July 31st, August 28th. They, and yesterday they just put out a list, corrections, they had some schools that they had on there incorrectly, but not any new, new schools.
I think it's important, though, to clarify, the injunction is against the department. It's not against us. We're not a party to that. So what a judge says in Kansas is applicable only to their enforcement of our regulation. We're not a party.
Thank you for that clarification because I think to state that it prohibits us from doing, right, is a, is kind of a generalization.
So this is the actual language, if you look at it, says, it's from, to pretend the department, the Department of Education, from implementing, enacting, or enforcing. So what, to echo what Mark was saying, is they're saying the Department of Education cannot enact these regulations, cannot enforce them in the schools that are subject to the injunction. So that is, it's prohibiting the department, it's not prohibiting the schools themselves.
So that just puts, keeps the 2020 rules in place?
Correct.
For those buildings?
Yeah, so technically what that means is that the, in the schools where, that are on the list for the injunction, is that because they use this language, implementing and enacting, it acts as if the 2024 regulations do not exist for the Department of Education on those schools. So what that really means is that, you know, 2020 happened, and 2024 essentially doesn't exist, right? So 2020 is really what controls in those schools at this point. And that is the interpretation that, you know, most, I would say, lawyers have, have found for this ruling.
But to, again, just to clarify, this is on the Department of Education?
Yes.
Not Springford. Springford is well within their right to make a decision either which way in terms of expanding protections for students or not.
Yes, and that's what this next slide is about. So these are the options that the district has. There are three different options, and the first is to continue to use the 2020 Title IX regulations. I haven't really seen any schools doing this at this current time. The second is to adopt 2024 regulations and apply them across the district, as Erica was just mentioning, and Mark has echoed as well, is that the, when we're talking about that the Department of Education is the one who is enjoying, technically the district can still enact policies as long as they are not an abuse of discretion in, for, you know, whatever the benefit is for the students across the district. And so the third one is to adopt the policy for the new 2024 regulations, which applies to schools not on the list, and 2020 applies to schools on the list. And I will say that is the, the most common approach that we've been seeing for schools in this area, is to implement it that way. And, you know, certainly for any of these options, there are always liability in each of them. I note below, the Department of Education has made clear, they actually had a webinar on the day that these regulations were implemented on August 1, and they made clear that they will be enforcing the 2024 regulations, and the school is not subject to the injunction.
Is there another slide?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I thought there was.
And Mark wanted to echo some-
Well, yeah, so I think that maybe there'll be a conversation piece about that. I do think there was at least one more slide surrounding the PHRC.
Oh, yes, sorry.
And its, its component parts.
Oh, there we go. Sorry, Mark, you're right.
Do you want to, do you want to mention that?
Yeah, I'll talk about this for a moment. So outside of Title IX, there is the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act, which is discrimination on the basis of sex is prohibited. So this is the definition, that bullet right there, on the basis of sex, does include all of these, all the different categories that were included in the new Title IX regulations. These, this has been the case since 2023. The PHRC has always prohibited discrimination on the basis of sex, but in 2023, they amended their regulations to include these categories. So that, so the district is required to comply with state law. All PA school districts have to continue to prohibit and eliminate discrimination on the basis of, you know, gender identity, sexual orientation, all of these different categories. So even if the school is in a position where they decide to stay with 2020 for a school that may be subject to the Department of Education's injunction, you still have to protect students in this way. And what that looks like is that these investigations would just go under the regular 103, non-Title IX sexual harassment. So it's important to remember that these students are still protected. A lot of the remedies that come out of Title IX versus 103 are the same. It is just a different procedure to get there, and there are different procedural rights that are given to students in the Title IX context. So that is one point that we wanted to bring up because, just because, you know, if a, the school district decides to do kind of the hybrid approach as far as enacting policies in different schools, there's still protections in place for all of these categories.
Thank you. Mark, Alexis, anything else that you would want to?
Well, that's the, that's the formal presentation. If there are discussions about kind of the options that were laid out, that this would be it.
So we have talked about this a number of times at the board table and at committee. So we've talked about it in August at the work session, the voting meeting, to some extent. We had a robust conversation at policy earlier this month, and I'm happy to report that most everyone in, in the board did attend the policy committee meeting. So this is not the first time that we're hearing this information. And then, again, asking Alexis to come to this meeting, you know, for purposes of sharing the information publicly, as we know, sometimes people don't have the opportunity to attend committee meetings. So what, where we are now is that, and speaking as one policy committee member, we need to relook at, we need to look at our policy 103. So, you know, and I'm sorry, Alexis, what is your last name? I keep calling you Alexis, but-
Spurlock, it's fine.
Spurlock, thank you. Ms. Spurlock. You know, reference that, and that our students, right, have been protected and have been covered under policy 103. And I know, you know, Mr. Rizzo, Mrs. Lee, as our Title IX coordinator, you know, have the interests of our, best interests of our students at heart in terms of how this district operates. So that is not necessarily the concern for me, but when it comes to implementing regs and the question of 2020 versus 2024, I do have questions in my mind. I, I have hesitancy, and again, speaking only as one director, to say, let's not expand protections, or that potentially there is a subset of students, and again, Title IX protects all individuals, but there may be a subset of students that are not explicitly, explicitly captured in 2020 but in 2024. So I guess at this point, I think, Mr. Rizzo, what you need and what you've been asking for from this board is kind of a will of the board in terms of how we move forward so that we can adjust our policies accordingly.
That's correct. And we have our policies up for first read. Whichever way the board decides they want to go, we'll just adjust them, bring them back for approval next month.
Can I ask a question? So for either of you, out of curiosity, if you wind up in a situation, or maybe you've seen this in other districts where they have hybrid, and it seems like additional schools have been added to this list, how is that treated then? Do you have to amend the policy to, for certain schools, or like, how's that being handled as some of these things change quickly?
So there's really been two ways that we've been doing that, and I believe the policy that is before Springford, it has it in a footnote in the administrative regulation, I believe, so that it's, it's something that's easy to remove and amend. Some districts are doing it on their website, they're putting notice on their website, on their Title IX page, to say, you know, if this, if your child attends, or this happened at this school, then this is the one that applies to you. Because there's still, I mean, any day they can supplement the list, and that can change.
So at this point, I think, again, given that we've had this conversation a few times, and this is not new information for the board, what we need to know is, is there a will of the board in terms of moving forward with, and we can go either way, we could say, moving forward with 2024, or maybe that's just the easiest way to say it. Like, is there a will of the board to move forward with 2024 across the district, which means that from a consistency standpoint, although I know Mrs. Lee is very capable of handling both regulations, whichever decision we choose, moving forward with 2024 would mean that all students would be covered under the same regulations, that we would be moving forward with expanding protections, not sticking with 2020.
Yes.
Yeah, the will of this board member-
The will of this board?
The will of this board member would be to put 2024 in all buildings throughout the district.
Do you want to put your mic on so they can capture that?
I feel that way as well.
Mrs. Hold-
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say thank you, you know, from one lawyer to another. You guys did a fantastic presentation, it was really good and comprehensive. My perspective has been, and it's probably no surprise, is I do think that we should, for the consistency of all of our students, to move forward with the 2024 regs in all of our buildings.
Dr. Shara?
2024.
I support 2024, but also Rothschild is paid to do this, so I appreciate it too.
Yes, we appreciate you. Mr. Lackey?
Yeah, I support moving into 2024.
I have one more question before I say. The one concern I have, and just to be clear, I'm on board with providing more protection to all our students, is just the increased potential litigation expense. So could you just talk about that briefly?
Yeah, and, and we shared out in our, in our memo on Friday, you know, we had described what was the traditional safe harbor, that, that hybrid approach. The possibility of litigation is there, as it is in all scenarios, frankly, especially with the hy, the hybrid, there's going to be inconsistency building to building, it can create its own issues. But I would describe it as a speculative liability. I mean, it's, it's hard for me to, you know, out of thin air, say, this is what would befall the district if we went that route. I can't, I, I, I can't put, you know, it in concrete terms. So I would say the liability is relatively minimal from, from what I'm seeing at this point. I would hope that we can get some direction from the courts in the meantime, so then we don't have to deal with this kind of purgatory, shall we say? But, but again, at this point, I think we're pretty good.
Yeah, and I think it's something to keep top of mind, but I also, on the same vein, you know, go back to the three organizations that have put forward the injunctions on various schools. And I think, just to put it simply, I think it's, there are political motivations, there And I think, just to put it simply, I think it's, there are political motivati, there are political motivations that may or may not be, you know, prompting this issue. And I have to, again, I hear what you're saying, Mrs. Westwood, but I cannot be fearful of doing what is right for children, expanding protections and ensuring that there is no subset of students that is explicitly excluded from harassment, discrimination, even though our policies well cover that, I, I think is a statement to be made.
And, and the one thing that's not in this presentation, because it's, it's kind of a separate analysis of Title IX, is when we as a district have true liability, and that's when there's deliberate indifference by the organization. In other words, we are ignoring problems that are going on in our schools. Regardless of the approach, of the three options, that's not what would be occurring. That would be where you have true Title IX liability. And as long as our administrators are trained, building level folks are trained, they can, they can understand what they're looking for, and understand the definitions they're working under, the deliberate indifference standard would never be something that we'd have to worry about.
So if I can just respond, then, I'm, I'm go with moving forward with 2024. Thank you.
But I also think from Ms. Westwood's perspective, I have a similar thought from a financial perspective, that this is a topic that should be talked about in finance next month, just to have a robust conversation about it. Because everything, everything ties back to finance.
About, so what is it that you would want to talk about in finance?
About exposure.
Well, I mean, I think Mr. Fitzgerald is saying that there is no way to quantify that exposure because risk and, risk applies to all three scenarios regardless of what we move from.
Yes, but we do budgets every year, so this would.
Oh, so you're talking about just making sure that the budget in particular, like how we think about, is maybe capturing that in, in the, okay. I think that's fair. Thank you. I was, I wasn't sure if you were wanting to hold off on moving forward with the will of the board, which would be a whole other conversation, but thank you for the clarification. So I likewise, I'm in agreement with the rest of the board that we should move forward with 2024. And as such, when we get to first read on the agenda for tonight under policies, we'll just make note of how we'll move forward with that.
Correct. And the policies would come forward under the regular rotation of first read tonight, and then approval in, in October.
Yeah, again, just to make sure we're clear, the language in the policy is not going to change next week. It will be for October. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Mrs. Deardorff.
Sure. I, I just want to thank the board. I think that this is the right decision, and I think it's important that we remember that the US Department of Education rule is that no person experiences sex discrimination in federally funded education space. No person. Doesn't say girl, doesn't say boy, doesn't say someone that identifies as a girl. No person in federally funded education should experience sex discrimination. And by doing this, we're ensuring protections for all of our students in all of our buildings. And our students have those protections under both. I'm not denying that, but we're ensuring that our students have the most robust protections available to them. So I thank you all for that. We have a duty to serve all of our students. And we can't base our decisions based upon extremist individual groups' desires and what they believe. We, we represent everyone, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on from presentations, we'll go to our committee reports, and starting with Ms. Gupta and Ms. Stein, student rep report.
Thank you. So this is our September rep report. There we go. All right, so for past events, we had our senior parent FPC presentation on September 4. Then we had picture day for grades nine to 12, 12 on September 6, and this was basically just for 12th graders to get their IDs. It wasn't for the yearbook purposes or anything like that. We had our ACT testing on September 7, and then that same day, we had our Roars for Community Day. And I was unfortunately not able to be there because I was taking, oh, wait, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know why the ACT says September 7. It was on the 14th, because I was taking it then. Anyways, I was unable to be at Roars for Community Day, but I saw on Instagram and on Facebook that it looked like a great time, so I hope that the board members that were there and the community members that were there had a great time. And then we had our class of 2025 graduation assembly on September 10, where the class of 2025 ordered their graduation gowns. That was very sentimental for me, and I'm sure for the whole class. And then the 10th graders, the class of 2027, had their class ring assembly on the same day, September 10. And then we had our ninth grade center open house on September 12. And now I'm going to turn it over to Annika for our future events.
Yeah, so there's a lot of future events coming up, but the most recent ones are, we have two days off, so Act 80 Day on Friday, September 20, which is this Friday. School is off for students. And then on October 3, we also don't have school for students because of Rash Hasana. And then a little bit more unfortunate is SAT testing on October 5, and PSAT testing on October 9. But then a little more fun, Homecoming Spirit Week is from October 14 to October 18. The Powder Puff Football Game is on October 18, and then on that same day, we have the nine, we have the 9-10 Homecoming Dance on October 18. And then the Homecoming Parade is the next day on October 19, and then that same day is the 11-12 Homecoming Dance. So for students taking these testings, just keep persevering through your assignments and keep working, because there's a lot of fun events coming up, so.
And then as always, we have our reminders to continue to read the weekly update for district-wide news, and for students, keep up with your weekly assignments. And I would also just like to add on to the testing. For our PSAT testing, I'm not sure if 10th graders are required to take that, but for 11th graders, it is an optional test. And I do highly recommend, if you're comfortable taking a standardized test like that, to take the PSAT, because if you do well, you will be, you'll have the chance to be in the National Merit Scholarship pool, which is a great amount of money for students who are planning to go to college. I know I took it last year, and it was, although challenging, it was just a great experience to be able to be put into that pool of students who could possibly get the National Merit Scholarship, and it is a great opportunity. So I know it might seem scary or anything to take the PSAT, but just take it, and you might get something great out of it. So that was our September student rep report. Thank you.
Thank you to you both, and I think great advice, because if I'm not mistaken, we'll be celebrating some students come October. So, thank you. Moving on, as I was about to pause, it is me. We have community relations that was held on Tuesday, September 3. This was the first time that we have held community relations since March of this year. As many of you know, community relations runs on a bimonthly basis. However, we did not have a meeting in May due to our special board meeting that was held that night. So we had a lot of catching up to do at this meeting. So Ms. Crew and Mr. Rothermell provided department update regarding everything that has happened basically since March of last year. So you can imagine, you know, and actually, it's really a kind of a feel-good presentation to see all the work that our communications team has done, everything from year-end events to graduation, to the start of the school year, to, you know, everything that's happening in September that Ms. Gupta and Ms. Stein, you know, has mentioned. So really fun to sit through that. The other thing that we talked about was the View Sonic Panel Project update, which I believe, last time we heard about this, Mr. Pravetti came. I think it was, in fact, the March meeting to talk about the installation, well, actually, not even the installation, the procurement, the installation, as well as professional development around these panels that are being installed in the classrooms and within the hallways. And so happy to report that that has since been completed, and good news story there. We also had a Parent Square update from Ms. Crew, and I will just say, as a parent, the Parent Square app is a game changer. So if you haven't downloaded the app, Erica Herman's recommends. So a lot of good information there. Mr. Rothermell provided a facility scheduling update with regards to new technology, the launch of FMX, our new facility scheduling software to make it easier and to integrate multiple systems into one for our staff and our teachers. Trademarking update, we've talked about trademarking a couple of times in committee, and still in process. So, and then we talk about trademarking, we're talking about our logo, and a few other, what's the word? Brand names. Thank you, Ms. Weingarten. I should have looked to the social media professional. Yes, so brand names, trademarks, all on that. So more to come. We'll have, look to have an update on the November meeting for that. And then we did have some new business. Ms. Crew shared our partnership with Be Part of the Conversation. So many families may be aware that we've held community programs throughout the year last year. Mock Teen Bedroom, identifying vaping concerns. And so we have moved forward with continuing to, to put out these programs for our families. And some of the ones that will be coming up is, again, is Mock Teen Bedroom, Parenting on Your Feet on October 24, Kid and the Tech Life Balance on January 16, and 21st Century Teens on April 9 of 2025. So this is being funded in part through the Pottstown Health and Wellness Grant, and if you haven't attended one, make sure that you keep an eye out, because these are great educational opportunities for parents and families. We did have a discussion on the grant for the menstrual hygiene products. So we also had the conversation in finance, which I'm sure Mr. Jackson will reference when he gets to his meeting, but the district is looking to move forward with applying for the grant. It's not available yet to be applied for, but more information to come as we get it. And so that is where we're at. Our next meeting will be on Monday, November 4. We're moving it to the Monday before Election Day, not the Wednesday after Election Day, and hope to see you there. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Moving on, I believe, Mrs. Weingarten, you will be doing the Curriculum and Technology Report for Dr. Wright tonight?
Absolutely. I was going to do policy first.
Oh, yes, I apologize. Policy first.
I got you. So the policy committee met on Monday, September 9. It was very well-attended. Meeting started at 6:00 PM and ended at 6:58. Old business that was discussed, Policy 180, will be reviewed by administration and then sent to the solicitor for review. Barring any changes, it will be brought forward as a first reading in the October board meeting. We had a very robust discussion about Policies 103, 103.1, 103.2, and 104. That's all related to the Title IX regulations, which we heard about earlier, and as well as the other policies. There's a long list of other policies that will be brought to a future meeting to discuss how they're tied to the Title IX updates. Policy 202 was briefly discussed, and the committee recommends that the administration conduct an analysis of the impact, should we amend to allow out-of-district employees to enroll their, enroll their children in Spring Ford. And the recommended discussion for our next board meeting was the presentation by Ms. Spurlock and Mr. Fitzgerald, Fox Rothschild. So thank you for pulling that magic off so quickly and clearly explaining a very complicated topic and making it very easy for everyone in the community to understand. So the committee recommends that policy, those policies, 103, 103.1, 103.2, 104, be brought forward for a first reading, and those will be, a first reading in September and further discussed in the October policy committee meeting. Policy 202 will be brought back to the committee in October as well as after the administration conducts the impact analysis. Our next meeting is at the district office on October 14 at 6:00 PM. And that's, any questions regarding our policy?
Yeah, I have one, please. There was reference to outside residence kids attending the district. Exactly what summary of impact is, is the administration going to do with this?
So as at the end of committee meeting, where the, the committee, Mrs. Goldsmith, Mrs. Weingarten, and myself left this, was, it was the will of the committee to explore, as just to be clear, not just an outside resident, but particular to staff and their children. So we are not necessarily recommending that this policy be looked at from the lens of allowing anyone outside of our district to potentially have their children attend Spring Ford, but from the lens of our teachers and staff. So right now, where we've left it is for the administration to look, to provide a comprehensive review of, you know, what that could potentially look like. There has been no decision made in committee, as we know that never happens, but we will continue the conversation with regards to Policy 28, 20, hold on, I said 218, that's student discipline. 202, thank you. Policy 202 in October. So please join us.
I do stand corrected, Madam President. So staff, which we have plus or minus 1,000 of now, and we're looking at potentially having those students, and the policy has still been developed, so it's not at the realm that it could be a child, a grandchild, a niece, a nephew.
No policy is being developed at this point. Nothing is being changed with regards to our policy. We've asked for information so that we can have a discussion, so that we can make an informed decision with how to or how not to move forward.
And that information will give a financial?
Yes, to the extent that that can be captured, but we haven't heard from administration yet, so.
As I mentioned in policy, this will definitely have to come through finance.
That's fine. And as I said at the end of the meeting, I'm okay with that. Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, Mrs. Weingarten, Curriculum and Technology.
Curriculum and Technology met on Monday, September 9. Mr. Catalano provided an update on the security items, device deployment, and summer projects. Curriculum, Dr. Gardi provided information regarding the upcoming curriculum reviews. For 2024-25, the following areas will be reviewed. Math grades K through 4, math grades 9 through 12, science grades 9 through 12, social studies, grade 10, art, K through 12, family consumer science, 7 through 12, health and physical education, K through 12. Dr. Reinheimer provided information regarding the 2024 civics assessment results. This information is on the district website under curriculum and instruction. And those results, 575 11th and 12th grade students took the assessment in May 2024. 96% of those students passed the exam. 75 students achieved 100% on that assessment. And that concludes the Curriculum and Technology meeting for September. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, October 14 at 7:00 PM in the district office, following the policy committee meeting. Does anyone have any questions? Fantastic.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, Finance?
Finance, the money committee. Committee, meeting was held on September 10. Meetings were accepted from June 11 as submitted. Items discussed was executive, executive reports through May 20, May 31. Liquidity is, is at 123 million cash on hand. Last year was 127 million. That variance is due to real estate tax deposit timing. We also discuss revenue, real estate tax variance due to deposit timing difference. Assessments increased 8.1 million since the June meeting. Real estate transfer taxes moving in accordance with plan. Earned income tax is increased 8.26 from the prior year. Self-funded health insurance, slightly over the average, expected to be around 1.6 million per month. Food service is only five days of operations. There was other business discussed regarding compensation for the tax collectors, and we would have that renewal completed or determined by February 2025. Further information to come. There was also discussion regarding state revenue for 24-25, an increase in basic ed of 600,000, and special ed of 200,000 subsidies. Further discussions to come. There was discussion of the menstrual hygiene products, and that is a topic that will have further, further, further discussions at the next meeting. Last but not least, I would like to thank Ms. Deardorff for pinch hitting until I arrived at the meeting. You did a wonderful job. Thank you. Any questions?
No, but I also would like to thank Mrs. Gold, Mrs. Weingarten for pinch hitting at Curriculum and Technology in Dr. Wright's absence, since you're giving out kudos. So, thank you. Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Finance. Nope, this is property. It's all money-related. So meeting was called the order at 7:00 PM on September 11. Meeting minutes were accepted as submitted. A update on the Spring City construction update was provided by Mr. P. Very detailed, great update. Very detailed, great update. A summer construction program, summer, summer construction project update of all the programs that occurred throughout the summer was provided by Mr. P. Chief Board discussed the PCCD grants for district radios, as the grant will be closing out shortly. Several camera projects throughout the district have been completed. Creation of a new emergency operation plan will be moving forward. Night locks installations are progressing, only a few remain. There would be a couple of items on the agenda for approval. Purchase of one cargo van, purchase of two lawnmowers. And that concludes my report for property.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We will skip over the MCIU, as that is typically covered by Dr. Wright, so maybe she can give that next week, if she's available. So moving on to Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening. I have two items to report on. The first one is in the area of the people services, and it is in relation to what we call the Student Assistant Program. Some of you may have heard the word SAP. It's a program that runs in all of our buildings. So the Pennsylvania Student Assistant Program is a team process used to mobilize school resources to remove barriers to learning. SAP is designed to identify academic, social, attendance, substance abuse, mental health, and other concerns which pose a barrier to student success. The primary goal of the Student Assistant Program is to help students overcome these barriers so that they may achieve, advance, and remain in school. That being said, I wanted to give you a district-wide and individual-wide update. In 2023-24, there were 401 SAP referrals district-wide. Currently, SAP teams are up and running, K through 12, and every building has a SAP team. The Karen Foundation will be training additional faculty in October. And Creative Health is our county SAP provider, provider. They have SAP liaisons that attend meetings, and they are there to assist our students and their families. Some of you may, who attend our back-to-school nights, they do have a table that is set up at the buildings. So that is my report on the people services. And in the area of special education, in October, on Saturday, October 26th, from 10 to 1, we will have our annual Special Education Resource Fair. The event will include family-friendly activities and a resource fair that highlights local special needs service providers. So please come and join. Thank you. Dr. Murray?
Good evening. A brief comprehensive plan update. We've closed the comprehensive plan feedback forum, and we'll be starting the first phase of the process, which is a comprehensive needs assessment. We have several meetings scheduled with the Comprehensive Planning Steering Committee, and we're very excited about the high response from the forum that we did receive, several parents, community members, and business owners. So we're very excited about that. Friday, September 20th is Professional Development Day for staff. I'd like to thank the curriculum department and special education departments for arranging the many professional development sessions planned for that day. And finally, I wanted to provide a brief update regarding state testing. This year, the Pennsylvania Department of Education made two significant changes with regards to state testing. The first is pertaining to the science test. PDE has updated the science standards, and with that are changing the PSAs to be delivered in, from fourth and eighth grade to fifth and eighth grade. This year, this will result in accountability waiver, but will not, but we still have a participation waiver that we have to adhere to. The second change is that PDE announced that in 2026, they'll be moving to full online testing. For Spring Ford, we've already moved to online testing for grades six to eight and keystones. So we had a discussion about the impact for grades three and four, and we will be moving forward with online testing for grades three and four this year. Once we transition to online testing, paper pencil assessments will still be made available to students within a com, as an accommodation for those requiring that as part of an IEP or 504 plan. And with that, that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Fitzgerald, anything to add tonight?
I have no further report this evening.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the voting portion of our meeting for next week. If there are questions and comments, please feel free to raise them. We'll start with section five minutes, letters A and B. Personnel, section six, letters A through J.
I, I had a question about the letters starting at D through, I guess, H. These are for, what, what is a curriculum facilitator, contact facilitator? And most of these are current employees, so is this for work outside of their day or I'm just, because, you know, we didn't discuss it at curriculum, so I was just curious as to what this is. Dr. Gardi?
Yes, they are teachers that currently are employed with the district. They do provide additional support to the curriculum, so these are hours outside of their regular workday. They do things such as update curriculum maps, learn about the steel standards for science, and then turn that around to their grade-level partners.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions with personnel? Okay, moving on to finance, section seven, letters A through G. Property, A, B, and C. I will, I will actually ask a question with the property. I was being somewhat facetious, but also on the same token, serious when I raised this question in property, Mr. Jackson. I said, you know, I'm channeling my inner Colleen Zazowski here and want to know if we are in fact going to be auctioning off some of this old equipment that we're no longer using.
And the response was yes, we will be pursuing auction off equipment with a, hopefully with a robust return.
Then what was that, the fourth time we used the term robust tonight?
That is the fourth time we use the word robust tonight. Not that I'm counting.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
That's Rowdy's middle name.
Great. Any other questions with property? All right. Moving on to section nine, other business. This is where we're getting into the A, policy first read, and then B is policies for approval. Any clarification, or is there any need for clarification? I, I think we talked about it before, but just we're going to be moving forward with ensuring that the 103 policies are reflective of 2024, and between now and the vote come the voting meeting in October, right? Or, yeah, we would be voting on them in October or November, just to clarify?
First read is September, so the, the final read would be October.
October, okay. Good. And then we have some informational items with regards to personal tenure, and then of course, the PSBA nominations that come up on a yearly basis. And that takes us to board comment. So is there any board comment? As I see Mr. Jackson pulling that microphone right to him, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Upper Providence Township, Trap Borough. I would really appreciate if you would schedule your silver work, civil work, which means milling of roads, installation of underground utilities and sewage before school starts. All of this work has started within the last two weeks, and we get complaints from parents about buses being late, and this is why buses are late. So I implore you, please do it in the summertime, like most of us. Second item. Growth in the township. If you live in Upper Providence, you get this brochure every quarter. And if you take time to look at it and look at the development map from the planning department, it gives you a big overview of what's coming on the pipeline. And again, we go back to population, and we go back again to the cost of educating our students. As of July 7th of this year, right now, there, there are 238 homes planned for Upper Providence, not Royers Ford, not Limerick, no place else, Upper Providence. That doesn't include Park House. This impacts the district. So when the parents come and they say, and they like to say, "Mr. Jackson, you're spending a lot of money," I'd just like to say, "I'm paying bills." And if you take 238 homes, and they're in various stages of development, if you do two, that's 500 kids. Houses go up quicker than commercial buildings. You can put up a house in eight months. It'll take us eight months to talk about it. But these are people who will buy houses and who will pay property taxes of their kids that attend the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other board comment tonight?
I have something very brief, and I would, I feel like I would be remiss on Monday Night Football, when we're about six minutes away from kickoff, not to acknowledge the memory of our Wendy Earl that used to sit right in the seat. So there's big shoes to fill while sitting in the seat, but she would have been here with her Eagles green nails, her blinged-out Eagles shirt, really annoyingly looking at all of us for yapping away, because she'd want to get out of here to get home to the game. So, you know, Wendy, I'm glad you're looking down on us tonight, because we're going to get out before kickoff, hopefully. Thanks.
That is so true. So I do have one, actually, I was going to make two board comments, but I think I will forego one maybe for next week. I don't think there's any sense of urgency with it. So the only one that I want to make in, I don't want to dishonor the memory of Wendy here, is as many of you know, this past Friday, our school community came together to support a Spring Ford student, Madison P., who joined our high school cheer squad at a Gold Out game to raise awareness for the fight against childhood cancer. And as many of you probably know, September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and dedicated to honoring those that are fighting cancer, remembering those that we've lost, and then just raising awareness about the challenges that are being faced by many children and families. So I personally, again, only speaking for myself, would like to invite our Spring Ford community to get involved in any way that they can. So whether it be participating in Gold Out events, like what Spring Ford did this past Friday to raise awareness, wearing your brightest blue this Friday, and I do realize it is an Act 80 Day and students are not in, but I am happy to see that this board did understand the assignment in terms of wearing blue today. So thank you so much for that in memory of our, in, in the spirit of Be Kind Ella Day. So please wear your brightest blue and engage in acts of kindness this Friday and, and/or making a donation of time and or money to where the organizations like CHOP or Julius Grace Foundation. So the support of the community does make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other board comment? Okay, so we'll move on to public to be heard, and this can be on any topic. It doesn't have to be related to the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to approach the podium? If so, please approach the podium with your name and township of residence, and just hit the button before you speak.
Hello, my name is Andrea Wetherburn, and I'm recent, a new.
I'm sorry, I think your mic cut out there.
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
I just recently, well, I moved to Spring Ford last year.
And what was your name?
Andrea Wetherburn.
And what township are you in?
Spring Ford.
Uh, Upper Providence or Limerick, Royers Ford?
Royers Ford.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. This is my first time at a school board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So I was coming because, basically, my daughter started school last year. She transitioned to, from McTacton School District, and ever since we've been here, it's been tough for her. She's been dealing with bullying since last year. I did reach out, I spoke to the principal, I spoke to the counselors, the teachers, just to try to come up with something. Last year, nothing worked out. She'd been dealing with depression and anxiety, so I got her into therapy. Starting this school year, she came back to the bullying from the same, same group of girls, which led up into her a fight happening in school the first week. The fight happened, she got suspended for three days, and when I went into the office to pick her up, it was explained to me that she could not attend anything at the seventh grade center. I didn't know that meant nothing at the whole school district, so it wasn't worded to me the correct way. So once she served her suspension, she went back to Friday, and she asked me if she can go to the football game with her cousin who's at the high school, and I said yes, because...
I'm sorry, can, can you stop her time real quick? I just want to make sure that you know, because since this is your first time, I want to make sure you know you only have three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, I want you to be able to, to express your concern, but you do have a time constraint, and I just want to make sure you knew that.
Okay, I'm gonna speed it up. So she went to the school, she went to the football game, and it wasn't told to her that she couldn't be there the first time. She went last Friday, and she was approached by a principal who kicked her out, but my daughter's only 12, so she can't walk home by herself, but it was like an urgency, they wanted her off the field, like out the gates right away. So she had to wait for her cousin, and she did question him, like why she had to leave. But long story short, she got suspended again today for four days, since it's a short week this week. And I just don't understand, like, because she got, she went to a game, I feel like there should be something implemented in the schools for like in-school suspension, detentions, or something, just because it's a game. I, I feel like it's not that serious, but when I was growing up, we had stuff like that. But you guys, when I talked to the superintendent today, he said, "You guys don't have anything like that in the school district." So I'm just trying to figure out another way, because she missed a lot of days of school, and school just started. My daughter is an A and B student, right now she got a 40. So I need to figure out a way that someone in this school district can help me.
Thank you. So with that said, I, I, public comment is public comment, and I certainly, even if it wasn't public comment, would not want to violate any Family Right to Privacy Act and speak specifically about student situation. So I will just say that at the end of this meeting, please approach Mr. Rizzo, our district superintendent. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay, meeting adjourned?
So moved.
Thank you.